Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, hello. Nice to see everybody again. Before we get into our next round of presentations, I just wanted to ask the board if they are okay with the following. So we have, obviously, our meeting tonight, and then we have another budget workshop on the 10th, and on the 10th, we will have our last presentations. We then go to our January 17 regular Board of Education meeting, and on that night, if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to open up, I'll put some room in the agenda for discussion on the budget, so then we can ask any follow-up questions and have a discussion on what our feelings are on this budget. We could potentially approve the budget that night, but if not, then we have the January 19 meeting on reserve to have further discussions and vote on it. But by the 19th, we have to submit our budget, approve Joe's budget, or make any changes. So we have to have a vote by the 19th. So if everyone's comfortable with that, what I'd like to do is continuing, continue to listen to the presentations, have a nice, open dialogue, asking questions, and then reserve our general conversation about the entire budget for the 17th or overlay into the 19th. If everyone's comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then we will move on. Is there any public participation concerning the budget since we had a budget workshop? Public participation for the budget. Okay. Then, Joe, we will move on.
Great.
Have your staff come up.
You got it.
Hey, Jen.
Jen's gonna come up, especially.
And before we begin discussing trend data and line items for our budget, I'd like to celebrate the successes of our students. So when Marissa and I were talking about it, we couldn't think of a better way to do that than by having some students come and talk about their experiences in Monroe Public Schools. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce to you Jill Callan, who's a senior here at Massey, and also Sophia Norton, who has recently graduated. They're going to come up and talk to you for a couple minutes.
Hi, I'm Jill Callan, a senior, and this is my speech. My experience in Monroe has been very different from my experience in my own school for the bear. And we know people with and without special needs or brains. People care both other than no matter who you are. My best friend, Colonel Principal Shawmi, is okay to be who I am, and that our bond is greater than any different things we have to make the way I talk. If I hadn't not come to Monroe in middle school, I would not be the person I am today. I have met so many people who stop and see me through I really am, like my teachers, my friends, and other people. They have taught me that everything things are what make us amazing, and without them, there would truly be nothing to learn in life. Monroe is continuing to help me to reach my potential through helping me in the work plan. During this time, I get to have real life experience and see what types of jobs might be best for me. After high school, I will be going to a nutrition program to continue to learn, become the best me. I could be so, I can be part of community and hold a job that harvests my talents. By I self-thinke, I come to Monroe of my long, long friendships that have shaped me into the person I am and gave me that confidence to became what I was meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Sophia Norton, and I am currently a first-year student at Salve Regina University. I am a special education and elementary education major. While I do continue to have some accommodations at college, it is rare that I need to utilize them. I have worked extremely hard to be in the place that I am today, which is an independent student working towards her goal to becoming a future impactful educator. It is only right that I credit my experience in the Monroe Public School Special Education System for inspiring my future plans as an educator. At a young age, I developed a learning disability, which made me feel inferior to my fellow classmates. Through receiving accommodating resources and motivating teachers, the support I was given to reach my needs was unmatched. The support I received instilled the confidence boost I needed to work as hard as I could to not only feel equal to my classmates, but most importantly, be proud of the person that I am today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Great job. Okay. Thank you both very much. You guys are wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So now, we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty of our budget, and if you have any questions, you can stop us at any time. Sorry. Okay. There we go. So Monroe's Special Education Department services students from ages three to 22 with a variety of disabilities, and I've talked about that many times before. And on Tuesday night, I talked about the fact that our special enrollment, we are at 556 students at this moment. That's in grades pre-K through 12, and also includes our community-based program of our students that we have who are up to age 22. So overall, that's 16% of our student, overall student population in Monroe. We're happy to report each and every one of our students supported with an IEP is currently participating in their program. We do not have any students who are unable to access their programming at this time. So our biggest challenges during the budget process this year was analyzing the needs of students moving into district, the newly eligible students, and the rising tuition and transportation costs. So the ever-changing needs of our students require programs to be adjusted to meet their current needs, and we must ensure that all of our students' IEPs are being met with fidelity. Similarly, we continue to have students refer to PPT due to social, emotional, and behavioral needs. So very often, we have to have psychiatric evaluations completed to help guide the team in best supporting a student when we have, when we're looking at those areas. So therefore, we continue to contract with outside psychiatrists to complete these much-needed evaluations. So those are our current challenges that we're facing right now. Next, we're gonna look at some trend data. So this chart highlights our trend data from the school year 2018-2019 to the present. And if you really take a look at the, let me see if I can use this pointer. Is it red? Yeah, there it is. It's on the ceiling. So if you look right here at 21-22, this number is shocking. That's the summer we transferred in 31 students that were identified with special ed needs. So that number, we've never seen anything like that before. Obviously, we're only going back to 2018-2019, but we've never seen anything like that. Then we had another 16 students move into district, and we totaled 47 kids, 47 students that moved in with IEPs last year. So this year, we didn't have as many students move in in the summer. We only had 10, but we already have had 16 move in during the school year. So right now, and actually, these are December numbers, we have 26 kids move in with IEPs. And I know between Marissa and I, we've heard of about, I think, two more students that are moving into district in the next month or so. So our numbers are definitely trending up, and we're watching that very closely. Okay. This graph highlights our special education enrollment. So when comparing our enrollment over the past seven years, it's apparent we're seeing a substantial increase in identification. This slide illustrates we have seen the most significant increases in special education enrollment in the past two years. This year, our October 1 numbers are the highest they've been ever to date. We have already exceeded last year's increase of 35 students with the 44 students who have either moved into the district or been identified since the beginning of the school year. Okay. Next, we're gonna discuss the referral and eligibility data that we have. But just before I get started, I just, I'm gonna try to use this too, I just wanted to clarify the chart a little bit. So you guys will see, the light blue here represents our pre-K population that have been referred and were found eligible. This darker blue represents our K through 12 population, so kindergarten through 12th grade, that were referred and found eligible. And then this orange up at the top is district-wide, so all students that have been referred but were not found eligible pre-K through 12th grade. So for every student referred, the school team must convene a PPT to determine if further testing is needed to better assess the student's functioning level. District-wide, we continue to receive referrals from school-based teams as well as families. Referrals vary in nature from speech concerns, academic concerns, and as well as social, emotional concerns. Evaluations allow our school team to better determine if a disability exists and whether or not that said disability impacts their education. To date, our team has identified 21 students in our K-12 population who need to be supported with an individualized education plan. It should be noted that there are a number of students currently in the referral process and eligibility will be determined in the near future. This year's data illustrates that we have received 55 referrals altogether district-wide. 28 of those referrals were from the preschool. Of the 28, 21 students were made eligible. Per our state reporting, there are eight additional preschoolers being referred for evaluation. This number does not include any referrals from local preschools or, and/or families. Questions so far? Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to staffing requests. So after analyzing student needs district-wide, we found two separate programs that were identified with areas we needed to look at. So the first program, and I don't think this is any surprise, is in need of additional staffing is our preschool program. The current student population of preschool includes 98 students with three classrooms of 22, one class of 23, and nine itinerant students. And that is an update from Tuesday because I was mistaken on Tuesday. So that is the accurate numbers for preschool right now in those classes. So those classes are quite large right at the moment. Just for everyone's understanding, itinerant speech students are children who have been identified and receive speech services only. So they don't stay in the classroom all day, but they come in and they are part of the program because they are identified special education students. With these growing numbers, an additional teacher has been requested to open a fifth classroom. So coupled with the need for a fifth classroom is the increasing number of referrals received through birth to three. So each child who is referred is also in need of initial testing. Every child screened must receive a speech and language evaluation. So currently, we have 1.3 speech and language pathologists that are assigned to the preschool. With this increase in enrollment and referrals, an additional 0.5 speech and language pathologist is being requested to complete evaluations and implement direct services. So over the past two years, we have seen an increase in behavioral needs of students across districts. Therefore, that is why we hired our two BCA, BCBA's who are working in district right now. So we also see that there is a need with our behavior, there are behaviors in preschool that also need to be worked on, so we're also requesting an additional BCBA to work with those students as well, to support the behavioral needs and to also provide direct instruction to our students. This BCBA would actually replace the behavior technician that we have in the preschool program, so it would be a dysphoric certified behavior analyst. So these three staff members will support the growing number of students enrolling in the preschool program as a whole. Our final FTE request is for Jacque Hollow. It's for a special ed teacher. And the reason why we're requesting this is that in order to meet the reading needs of our rising sixth graders who are coming into Jacque Hollow Main Campus, we want to make sure that we can support their needs also while supporting their IEPs with their push-in, pull-out hours, direct reading, and math instruction. So this additional teacher is needed to assure we remain in compliance with our students' needs. So this additional teacher will increase the overall number of special ed teachers at Jacque Hollow's main campus to eight. Okay. Professional education services refers to outside agency services for students who attend magnet schools and nursing care. Our outside agencies provide behavioral and mental health services to students both in and out of district. So this line shows a decrease of approximately $236,000 due to changes in student programming. The Special Education Department funds the services identified students receive while attending magnet schools. So while reviewing projected enrollment numbers, we have calculated a decrease in the funds needed to support the current students attending magnet schools next year. So if we have a student who has speech services and they're attending, let's say, Fairchild Wheeler, we would, that would be part of our budget that we make sure that we have appropriate amount of money in there to fund any kind of special, speech services that they need. So that's what that is for. So that's what we see a decrease there because we don't have as many students going to magnet schools next year. The nursing line is less $30,000 as well, and that is due to the number of students who no longer need one-to-one nursing care. So that's a decrease, too. So overall, we've seen a decrease in professional education services overall, and this is due to the additional staffing and programming that we have created in district. Moving on to tuition public. For next year, an increase of roughly $210,000 was added due to students who newly moved into the district. These calculations are based on a 3% increase in tuition for the students who are currently enrolled in these programs. These newly enrolled students are PPT'd for summer programming as well. Therefore, we needed to increase the amount budgeted for summer tuition to support their And then with that, looking at our tuition private, you'll notice an increase in this account directly, which correlates to student program changes that have already taken place this year but were not budgeted for. The decrease in tuition sped private summer reflects a change to a student's programming who moved from a private to a public enrollment. Okay. So we'll talk about transportation, and obviously, transportation is directly linked to student programming. So we have calculated an increase in all lines for next year's budget due to changes in student programming and the needs of our newly enrolled students. So all calculations were based on current contracts plus a 4% increase. And as you can see here, our largest increase is calculated in our system-wide budget line, which is an increase of approximately $298,000. And once again, this is due to high-cost students who recently moved into district. These students not only need special transportation, but they always, but they also require supports within the vehicles that they travel in. So when making transportation arrangements for students, the district utilizes All-Star Transportation, and we also use private companies with vetted drivers. And each decision for student transportation is based on individual need. I'm excited to say that we've recently purchased two 12-passenger vans that will be used in our Massey vocational program and our community-based program. And the use of these vans is not only, not only to create more opportunities for our programs and for our students, but they'll also offset some of our rising transportation costs. They just got delivered about a month ago, so we haven't started using them yet because we're in the process of getting them licensed and all those good things. But we anticipate we will find more opportunities to utilize these vehicles during the course of next year, for the rest of this year and next year, and we'll find even more ways to offset some savings for transportation once they're in use. Okay. So this is the excess cost grant comparison. The excess cost grant is the grant that reimburses districts for students with exceptionally high-cost special education needs. So we get a partial reimbursement for that. Historically, the district budgets for excess cost based on the prior year. However, due to COVID, the past two years haven't exactly been what we've budgeted for in the past, just because of the fact that we, because of COVID, we had students that were not accessing their programming. But as I had said before, we have 100% of our identified students are accessing their programming this year. So we have estimated excess cost reimbursement for this year to be approximately $591,000. As high-cost, as high-cost students age out, we have others who moved into district and are have programming with significant changes that identify them as high-cost. So with, with the information we're aware of today, we anticipate excess cost for next year to be approximately $575,000. So the fact that our excess cost is trending downwards is a positive because it means we're spending less to meet the needs of our identified students, so we're able to do more of that in district, which is definitely a positive. So overall, this budget was created with the information and programming that's currently available to us today. So as a reminder, and we know and I talk about this monthly, that our programming for students with support services can change at any time. So we continue as a staff to balance these expenditures with the needs of our identified students. So after reviewing everything today and looking over the historical data and staffing requests, we just wanted to make sure that we highlighted the reason why we're here, and I think that having Jill and Sophia really grounded us in that reason. So, thank you.
I said you met with them, right? Yeah. Just looking for your comments on anything first?
No, I was, you know, I was surprised it came in. I thought it was gonna be higher, but it came in more than I thought it would be. You know, and the budget drivers were pretty obvious, but the budget drivers were gonna be transportation, preschool. I mean, they, there was nothing, nothing surprising at all.
Any other questions from the board?
You know I do.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Jen, I'm gonna be stuck on this a little bit. So if I'm still doing math, so you have really high numbers in your preschool classes. You have currently 98 students. You're projecting eight more. How many of those are going to kindergarten next year? If you know.
I know that we have, I know we have 12 students going to Stepney next year. I think we have like 10 students going to Fawn Hollow, and I'm not exactly sure about the number going to Monroe, but I can find out for you. But the, but all these, the kids that are all coming in, obviously, they're three-year-olds.
Right. So that was my next question, because there's no way to predict the next year, how many three-year-olds. But if you look at the trending data, you have about 100 kids. Or, sorry, it's five teachers. Like those, those numbers really scare me. Those are high numbers for little, little kids with special needs.
They are, and that's the conversations that we're having. But what's happening right now is too, we're looking at that fifth classroom to actually have, be more of a concentrated classroom for students with behavioral needs and students that are possibly on the spectrum. So we're hoping that by having those students in more of a self-contained classroom, that they'll, yeah, the teachers and the other classes will be able to focus. But you're right, the numbers are high, and we can't, we can't predict what's coming.
Right. That's just, I just want to say that's concerning to me because they're, they're little.
Mm-hmm.
They need a lot of support, so I worry about the staff in there. And then my second question was, you know, I, you look, just looking at the excess cost, that's great, thank you, and everything is really thorough. I was just wondering, do you see much reimbursement from Medicaid, or it's not really enough to kind of predict or offset anything?
It's, it's not a lot. I think last year it was 15? I think it was, it was like $15,000 last year. It's not, it's not a lot.
It's not enough.
It's not.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just one comment.
Go ahead, Dan.
I mean, getting two vans is great, and I think that was outstanding. What about drivers? How are you situated for that?
Dan is driving.
That's true. That is true. We're working on that. We have the teacher.
You take your test tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly.
Save your time. We're supposed to get your CDL.
This is our preparation tonight. So we just need a class, I think it's a Class A endorsement. We don't need a CDL to drive these vans, which is a good thing. So for the staff that actually works in the vocational program and the staff that works in the, in our community-based program, we're gonna have them drive, so.
We've worked with, I think you were saying, there's a course that they have to take that All-Star is gonna provide for us to take. And I know Sheila has brought the policy.
I was just gonna add that, Dennis, we just thought it up last, last policy we're bringing to you.
Okay.
Policy to have those who want to be trained, trained in, we'll mingle them. We mean the board.
How many students do they accommodate?
12. 12 passenger vans.
Oh, they are 12, sorry.
Yes, no, that's okay. So they're 12, so it would be perfect because our.
And then they could go to unified sports on those.
They can also use it for unified sports, absolutely.
Do we have any other vans available? Are we covering any? No, nice.
Before the policy comes to the board for first review, the policy committee wanted us to have it reviewed by our insurance company that deals with our motor vehicles for the town. So Ron and I sent it out to them.
So it's past record, so you won't be able to drive this time?
So it'll be there soon, just not yet.
Sheila said that it'll be there. What did Sheila say?
She said what you just said, Shannon, that the, that it wanted, they wanted to get it reviewed by Karma, First, our insurance company.
Okay. All right. Perfect, yeah.
Nice job.
Anything else?
Yeah, just to bounce off what Chrissy mentioned, in a typical preschool classroom, like how many adults would be in there?
So right now, we have the teacher and two paras in the classroom. Sometimes, there may be an additional para, but it's pretty much two teacher, one teacher and the two paras in the classroom, para educators. And then we also have our related service staff sometimes who's pushing in or they're pulling students out.
And the BT that floats.
Just come in, maybe do a class-wide.
Work with smaller, work with smaller groups, OT, PT, right? And then we also, right.
The BT that floats between the classes as well.
Okay. And there's room for pull-out services at Monroe?
Jen's laughing.
Little bit.
Yeah, because I know toward it was like, oh, okay. There's.
We try to use every space that we can, so.
And moving forward, probably next year, we're looking at moving one of the, not ideal, but, you know, the alternative is, you know, moving everything out of the central office and whatnot. So we're looking to move one of the sections to Stepney, where we have a classroom there. So it's not too far from Monroe, so for the staff that are gonna have to travel, but that's, that's what we're looking to do, is have one section, at least one section at Stepney next year.
Any other questions?
I did have a question about transportation, but I sent it to you, and you probably had any chance to review it. It was today. But the, we could talk about it later, because it not necessarily has to do with special ed, but it's regarding the transportation, the contingency. It's, I can give you the object line code, or I, you know, I don't need an answer right now. I just, I sent it to Joe, he just had a chance to look at it today. But it was the, it has to do with the contingency. My question would be, is a contingency cover overruns with special ed, or is it that contingency something else? Because it was.
You're talking about the current year budget contingency?
Correct.
For transportation?
Well, the current, so the last, 2023, there was budgeted for $200,000.
We, we had an open contract with All-Star.
Okay. And then, because we're only, we're budgeting $30,000 this year, that, that would be my, ultimately, my question is.
Yeah, and that's why. We had, we had the open contract with All-Star, so the contingency was projected.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Dan.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Marissa.
Bob, can you check this TV for me here? I just want to, it seems like it's locked, and I just want to make sure that the viewers are seeing the slides. This is showing something different. Thank you.
Are you putting a movie up there?
I don't know what, I don't know what that is. I just.
Quick look, guys.
Thank you. Mike, sorry, go ahead.
No, of course. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. First off, want to thank Shannon Bosley in the phone. She met with me before the holidays and went over the curriculum and professional development budget. Like Jen's, this is a budget that is K-12, and, you know, oversees a lot of the support, you know, instruction for our teachers and all the great work that they do. You guys have all the budget. I'm really gonna just focus on a few lines that I bet you have some questions about. So I want to make sure that we clarify what some of these changes are. From the curriculum side of the budget, there are three lines that I wanted to talk about with you. And the first one is the textbooks, the new curriculum, regular ed, which has an increase of $10,000 from this year's budget. That includes the two textbooks that you guys already approved, so it's a Spanish one and the AP US History. In addition to that, we have to make some changes to our K-8 Health curriculum. So, I want to make sure that we clarify what some of these changes are. From the curriculum side of the budget, there are three lines that I wanted to talk about with you. And the first one is the textbooks, the new curriculum rega, regular ed, which has an increase of $10,000 from this year's budget. That includes the two textbooks that you guys already approved. So, it's a Spanish one and the AP US History. In addition to that, we have to make some changes to our K-8 Health Curriculum. And that is because of state statutes about what we need to do to that. And so, right now, starting this fall, guidance and the PE health teachers, we've started the work of looking at some approved or recommended, excuse, not approved, but recommended curriculums from the state, from other states that they're using. So, we budgeted about $10,000 for that. So, that's not a hard and fast number. Over the course of the next couple of months, we're going to make some decisions about it. But that was sort of a safe bet as far as how much that curriculum is going to cost. But that's a K-8 curriculum. So, that's that difference right there. And if you have any questions about anything as we go through, just stop me. So, as things come up.
As you did in the past, you'll present that to us?
Yes, that's going to go through curriculum council and such. But the fact that it's a state mandated thing for the fall.
Yeah, we just.
We have to, yeah, we have to make sure. Yeah, absolutely. For sure.
Mike, I just, textbooks in general, what is the trend of buying textbooks versus a lot more online stuff? Is it, is it still moving in towards that direction?
Absolutely. And we don't generally buy a lot of textbooks that don't have the online component for that reason. I mean, we're even seeing, and you know, Julia talked about it yesterday with the instructional supplies, there's such a move to so much being available online that we're not buying these, we don't, you know, we're not putting in for those big, you know, basal readers of English for, you know, the high school and middle school, those, you know, $100,000 things we used to have to put in. It just, we don't need them anymore. You know, so much stuff is available.
So, there's a gradual savings because we're buying.
Yeah, there's a gradual savings. And you see that, and, you know, you see that as in the instructional lines, and actually, what we're spending those instructional lines are, for sure.
The teachers will still get their, their books and their test materials and the form materials.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you look at even the AP US History, like the fact that we're going to, we're going to be able to give new AP US History for like $9,000. Like, I think probably the last time we did it 10 years ago, it must have been close to $50,000. And just because of what is available now online. So, that's a good example of where it's sort of.
Thank you.
Trending, absolutely.
Thank you to Mike for meeting with me before the holidays too. And we can, I can see this slide. I'm doing, I watch you guys on YouTube, which is just a few seconds delayed from the phone call-in, but, but, so the slide was there, and thank you to Mike for everything. It was, it was helpful meeting with him.
Bet, yeah. Okay. So, the next line is instructional supplies for English system-wide. And what this is, this really goes back to the presentation that you heard a couple of months ago about the mandated reading program. So, we are going forward with the waiver application, and that's going to be due, we finally got the, what the waiver application has to look like mid-December. And that's going to be due at the end of February. And we are cautiously optimistic that waivers are going to be approved. There's been a lot of conversation at the state and amongst, and, you know, even the commissioner has been very sort of forthcoming to say, no, we're going to be working with districts. You're never going to get a, no, you're denied, all that. So, there's been a little bit of a change in tenor, probably because of your reaction was similar to many other Board of Ed's reactions to this. So, there has been sort of a change in tenor. So, we're, we're cautiously optimistic, like I said, that we're going to be able to move forward and keep doing the great work that we're doing. We're seeing the results. We saw them in the assessment. We want to keep in that direction. So, what this constitutes is it constitutes us buying the new units of study for the remaining sections for, you know, K-1, 2 in Teachers College. So, that would bring us to like $13,000 for us to do that. If, the big if, if for some reason our waiver gets denied and we have to do the extension, which we would do the extension because we will be able to pay for it, the next year, we'd probably talk about, like we said, three-quarters of a million dollars, $750,000 to pay for one of the state-approved reading programs. So, that's why we're cautiously optimistic that our waiver is going to get through. So, the difference between $13,000 and $750,000, you got it, is, is huge. So, we have this as our hold, and we're looking to hopefully get that waiver approved soon enough, you know, this year to be able to go forward with that. So, so that's big.
Mike, that line wouldn't repeat itself the following year?
No. Because that line would get a set for where we were. So, what we did this year, Sheila did, in my position last year, was bought enough for like them to work with it this year, but we, they didn't want to make the big investment in it because we didn't know where any of this was going to go. We didn't know what was going to be approved programs, but now that we know where we are and where the waiver's going, we want to be able to make that commitment to be like, all right, that's it. But it's the other pieces. For so many years, you guys have been investing money in this program that has, you know, reaped such huge benefits. Like you, I'm sure we have over the course of these years, spent close to three-quarters of a million dollars to build this program up. So, for us to start from scratch, so that's, you know, that's what our thinking is with the waiver and why I want to move forward this way. So, yeah, that should get a set.
There's no interest in changing programs from this board, so.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to be putting our feet down on that.
Thank you.
Knowing this is theoretically an unfunded mandate, potentially, right? Is there a penalty clause that we have to budget for? Any kind of financial hit they would give us? Okay.
Nope. We'd have to do an extension if we get denied, and then we'd see that in another year, but let's see what's going on. Yeah. Let's see how the policy, how it plays out.
The extension is allowed.
Financial.
Right.
Right. The line below that, you know, we put an additional $2,000 into instructional supplies for math, and that is related to, you know, utilizing more of those illustrative math resources, which is very state-recommended resources. A lot of our neighboring districts are using illustrative math. You've probably, we talked about it at assessment. To that end, you know, Joe has asked for Roseanne and Kevin in about two months' time, I think, they're going to come and do a little bit of PD here, so that you understand, like, what is this illustrative math they keep talking about? And what are the components of it? But, you know, it is a different sort of way to do mathematical thinking and to really instruct. And a lot of the teachers are starting to do it, and the kids are really engaged in this type of mathematical thinking. So, we wanted to put a little bit more money in it for the manipulatives, for the materials that we would need for that. But it's not a huge, it's not a huge lift, but it makes a huge difference. Those are the major changes in the curriculum budget. All the other, everything else is pretty flat with curriculum. Before I move on to PD, did, do I have any questions about this? All right, professional development. So, the external vendor line obviously is a lot bigger for next year. And that's really a result of, right now, we pay our TC trainers out of the ARP SIR Fund. And as we've been talking about the grant funds, we're taking it out of that and putting it into the operating budget. As we look to continue to develop with, you know, what we know about the science of reading and these programs, and, you know, changing teacher practice with the instruction of science reading, you know, TC's been great about moving forward with that and changing, you know, their instruction and changing their curriculum and their materials to support that. It allows us, and that $45,000 gives us, first of all, it gives us 15 full days with trainers who come into our schools and work with our teachers and our students in classrooms, in workshops. It gives us access to PD throughout the year. All our teachers have access to two full days of like virtual workshops. They call the Saturday reunion. It's amazing. So many of our teachers are able to go in, and it's because we pay this, we have access to it. Tomorrow morning, Kim and I have a, we have an office hours with the Connecticut lead trainer who wants to answer any questions we have. Later on in the day, they're gathering a group of Connecticut educators, talk about how they can support us more with science of reading. It's more than just like one-shot PD with TC. That's the great thing about them, and they say, what do you need? Like tomorrow morning's office hours is for her to ask us, what do you need? What do you want to do for the second half of the year? And they respond, and their PD is not canned. It's not, it's like, what do you need in Monroe now? And they come and they do that. It's amazing. It's amazing PD, and I think it's what has built the teacher efficacy that we've seen to give us this work. In addition, the other $10,000 is for some illustrative math work, to have some people come in, some trainers come in. It is not inexpensive, but we want to do sort of a train-the-trainer model with that, to have that same kind of work, because their model, because most PD models that are most effective are those that go into classrooms, watch teachers teach, and then they model the work. They say, this is what I saw, try it this way, we're going to try it this way in the next class. So, that's what we're looking to have done with our math program too, moving forward with next year. So, that's that big increase there.
Are those allowed to be recorded, so you can play them later to other people?
Not, not usually. Teachers College, no. No. But that's why we have them in the classrooms, and we bring in reading teachers, special education teachers, classroom teachers are all in there. It's, you know, a thing type.
Is the goal ultimately though, to, like you said, train the trainers for this reading so that eventually your, I, I, my guess is Kim could probably teach the TC people more than they could teach her at this point.
You know, the thing about TC is.
Will you like start letting go?
I mean, ultimately, conceptually, TC and it's so much on the front lines about what's going on in research, you know, they, you know, we talked about like sort of the bad name they received, but they're the ones who've made some of the biggest changes with the biggest research. We have not had an experience where they haven't come and we go, oh, my gosh, Eureka, a brand-new way of, like, how do we address the changing needs of kids? And they do a lot of that legwork that we can't do. And ultimately, yes, would we love that? But we haven't seen that that's, you know.
Not yet.
Education's changing so much, and it's good to have these partners whose real life's work is to sit there and do the research and do the labs and do that, to bring this to us, to be like, this is what's working when we do it in the labs. This is what's working when we find out. So, yes, wouldn't, yes, but, you know, education, as you know, as you all know, it keeps changing, and we need partners that, you know, change with it. So, that's where we are at this point, especially as reading is changing so much right now in this. And the second piece is really, it's a stipend, it's called best mentor, but I just put team in there because that's an old line, it's now called team. That's a state mandate. We, for all year one and year two teachers who are new to the occupation of teaching, not necessarily new to Monroe, they have to have a mentor for the first two years, and we have to pay them $500, those mentors. And as you know, we've had a lot of new teachers lately. So, we have 12 year one teachers this year, so they're going to be moving on, and they still need mentors next year.